Because I didn't do that, I'm sorry. Can you live without it?
I can live without it.
Super duper.
All right, meeting is open, we begin with public comments. Mr. Kinsler, Sean, our police chief.
So because I think this is a public issue, or we've talked about it before. Representative Margaret Drier from Plankfield. Last, oh, nearly two years pushing legislation to get the state to enact something that will protect our recovered bridges. And as of two weeks ago, on the thirteenth of June, HB one-two-one-seven was passed. And what that is, is the towns are now allowed to put up cameras on covered bridges for the purpose of investigations into damage and the oversight vehicles. That's pretty, so those bridges, yes. These those three forty ton pickup trucks are going through all the time. And also, House Bill one-four-five-seven dash F N was enacted and has a lot of typical hongo jumbo in here, but the basics of it is, is that there are now there are now state penalties.
Thousand dollars.
For, actually, it's a hundred dollar first fine and two hundred and fifty for any subsequent. You were just hoping that. You added us here.
It must have been late.
Anyway, I congratulate Representative Drier for her hard work and the fact that she was able to make something happen.
This has been enacted by the legislature and signed by the governor?
Yes, yes.
We have a law.
I would like to move.
Full house, raw recollection of the process.
To make a motion that we authorize Sean, our police chief, to have cameras installed at a bridge.
Let's wait till after they fix it. The roofs. Yeah, the roof is coming out.
Organize it.
In lieu of that, yeah, I was just gonna say, why don't we have a motion to authorize Sean to do, undertake a study to see what would be involved and what the cost would be. You know, what?
Okay.
Why don't you do some research and give us a recommendation about what you think we ought to deal with? And what, what, what the problem would cause?
Uh, we got a second, great. We should just authorize Sean to take care of it. Do it, do his. I, I, we could probably find an open-eyed camera system that works just like on here.
Is there sunnier coverage there in the new wood?
There should be there, there's actually a pretty good spot.
The river Otis, yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's a couple hundred dollars or even a thousand dollars, I don't care if it's, if it's gonna be a significant annual expenditure, then we should, I think, should hear about it before, before the time we go.
Yes, well, I won't do anything.
So are we authorizing or pending board approval? How about that? Authorize pending board approval? Or do we want to?
Just ask me to research it for now.
Right.
All right. I don't, I mean, you can get systems for your home that are pretty easy to install.
So you gotta put in some more work.
Well, the felt is always.
Gotta have electrical power. Some sort, right? You don't have an outlet out there, so it depends.
Solar, yeah, right.
Solar power. Now, really hard off, because we would have a camera and didn't resell the bridges and spikes come out.
Flatten the tires.
Yeah, let me go talk to Matt about that air conditioning.
Please. Excellent.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, so we authorize this study.
Yeah.
Well, it's okay. Um, do we have anyone on?
We have Jan Williams.
Okay, yes, Jan.
Um, I'm here to observe, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. We have anyone else?
No.
All right, quiet, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, let's vote in the minutes of June twenty-sixth, and David had several.
Nits.
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 Didn't want it.
All right, move on. One second.
All those in favor say aye. And Judy, aye. And they are approved with those couple of changes.
Thank you.
Their last night, or this morning. So that's minutes, we have two manifests. One which we just saw just now, the other we saw before.
Right.
One is for five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents, of which five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the school. And the second one is for fifty-five thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
All right.
Okay, Ben?
One second.
Okay, David, do we have any questions on these? I have a question.
Good.
The town for are paying for rental housing at the Home on Connecticut, because that typically being the property that is received funding from the town.
In the last eight to nine months, yes.
It's been a pretty expensive.
Right.
Yeah, just double checking, okay. And good for those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Judy, aye. Okay. We have two policies and one ordinance that we hopefully were looking at. One has to do with snow removal and ice control policy, and it's a multi-page guideline, basically, for the road agent and the roads crew. It does state within it that these are guidelines that depending on the actual circumstance may not be exactly followed, but it basically says how many inches of snow, what type of road surface it is, when it will be plowed, how long between plowings before you go back out. Right, these are public if someone wished to rip them. That means.
Were there any changes in the role of Paul?
Um, Scott is reviewing, I think he's well, it's the through-road traffic one that he was gonna take a couple roads off.
No through trucking?
But the no through trucking, yeah, but this is really just for you guys, yeah, to review and talk about it, then it will go away and come back with any suggested changes from from, from Scott or Sean, although I know they had a conversation about it, so Sean may have something to say too. And I, they're on there because I'm hoping every month we can do three or four different policies or ordinances that you guys just probably don't even know about, but that should be reviewed every five or so years, and it spends some time.
So Otis' one was.
Yeah.
So we don't have any action until it
You don't have any action until Sean gets back in here, and if he tells you what's, what, what him and Scott decided, then that would be a change, but you'll, he should be right back.
David?
I read through the, these, and in particular with snow and actual rule of policy, I was left sort of wondering why we have this. Because the policy says it's up to the road agent, and then it sends out a bunch of stuff where we do this, we do that, we do that, subject to the road agent.
I think that's a problem because if somebody complains that it's snowing.
It was, well, I can tell you what it's from, it comes from a couple of years, quite a few years ago, of residents that were complaining about the roads not being plowed what they felt was sufficient. So a lot of towns have a road clearing policy or whatever, so that particular board drafted that as a guideline.
So from a, from my perspective, this is a bad idea.
Okay.
Because people, we basically have a policy that says it's up to our road agent, we trust our road agent to make those decisions, and then we set out this whole complicated policy that just gives people a basis to complain or, or to litigate, you know, they could say, hey, you didn't follow, you have a policy here, and it says, you didn't follow it, and then we're gonna be saying, well, because our road agent has discretion, if that's the, that.
You think that's.
If someone came to me in my legal practice and said they wanted to do this, I would advise against it because you're just giving people a basis to make trouble, and you're not adding anything, doesn't.
Well, the only thing that it adds is Nina can give them the policy to let them understand why the road wasn't plowed before, got the three inches or something like that. And you're taking up Scotty's time.
Right.
Trying to answer a telephone call.
Or, or being accosted while they're out plowing, because that happens frequently. So.
So does this actually function in that way?
Yeah, when, when people call, I send it to them and say, here's, you know, here's what we go by, and we've never had any challenges from it, yeah. But, you know, if you don't think it's a good idea. Right, then he would have to ask you guys to change it.
No, no, because the policy says he can do whatever he wants.
Right, correct. Right.
Have to say, yeah.
Right. Right.
But yes.
Yeah.
You're right, it's.
But the last thing we wanted was increase the call line.
Right.
Well, and it, I guess I would have to say that perhaps it would protect the town in an instance where we maybe had a different road agent, and there were more issues with the road agent and his or her decision making.
But then again, we can address that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, and I know when this was written, legal reviewed it too, so, and they didn't, I don't remember them cautioning that it wasn't a good idea.
Which not, should we do this or not, but I'm supposed to, I wasn't part of that conversation.
Jay, Jay and Laura, or Jay was usually pretty good at that.
If this is helping, that this actually makes people not bother Scotty so much, and it has some beneficial effect, and that's, and that's a good argument, but it exists.
Right.
But normally, I would say the policy is the road agent gets to decide, and having another parallel policy that says, but generally, here's what the rules are gonna be, just gives people a basis to complain and or go forward if he ever wants to do something different than what we've set out in the policy.
Yeah. Man?
Thank you, thank you for your expertise. Next one, maintenance of driveway culverts policy.
That one is very helpful all the time.
But the only one I had that reaction to was.
That one, yeah, right, yeah.
And, and the driveway colors, it is helpful, and I know from my own experience, you know, sometimes you don't know if it's the homeowner's responsibility or the town's, and you've got something that sort of clarifies that.
Right, because a lot of people are under the assumption that the culvert at the end of their driveway is the town's culvert and responsibility, so. Correct, it is not.
And then then we've got. Well, so do I, to tell you the truth, I've spent more on my culvert than I.
You've got a big culvert.
If the town wasn't dumping all the water into it, it'd be okay, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just trying to, never mind, I was trying to be funny.
Through trucking was the third ordinance, and I believe that has proven to be helpful as well in the past, when sometimes we needed to close a road, limit roads such as in mud season, or if there's something going on with one road.
No, it's all the time.
Are we making changes to any of these, or are we?
The two you just talked about, not that I know of, possibly the trucking one. Uh, Scott.
We're not voting on them.
And the history.
No. Yeah, but if you had questions, it'd be great, and then I can and then the questions you have today can go to Scotty, and he can have answers for you when he comes. He just has to be out there because they had some washout, so.
We touched the bowl last.
We sure did.
Whole scrap.
Big one.
Got washed, washed away and.
Yeah.
Well, north of us has been terrible. Did you see Monroe? Did you see Monroe?
I didn't see Monroe, I saw Barry again, Barry.
Monroe literally lost, I don't know how many roads, I mean, they're just like all asphalt roads, all paved away.
See this big, long, giant red storm moving through just north of us.
Yeah, we were lucky.
And we got enough rain to, I don't think the water. She probably watered before.
Yes, yes, I was thinking about it.
So. So, yeah, I know.
Yes.
So I'll just put that you guys reviewed the policies and the ordinances, and Scott will come back, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, and then we have Michael Hensley joining us, ten nineteen, and he has kindly consented as a previous select board member to sit with us and review and a request for an exemption that is actually been to the D R A and come back to us.
Legal.
Under legal, okay, but we're not going in non-public section, and um, Michael sat with us the last time we had this conversation, it's the Killam Bear property. Ben will recuse himself very shortly as will David, who's on the board there, and we need two people to sit and make a decision, and I guess this board, before you guys refuse yourself, should make a motion to seat Michael.
I'll agree.
Thank you, David.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye. Judy, aye, and Michael, and Michael and Judy have a decision to make.
So.
Okay, there, we'll wait for them to step out.
I'll find these, you know.
And I don't think you trade for more.
Okay. Here at Michael.
Okay, so my, my clerkages, so there's, there's an exemption, and there's stuff that's set into allowing to accept.
Yes.
And this was reviewed, and we had a discussion, and then there was a legal question of what building was or wasn't taken out, and then that has been.
That has.
The legal, the legal question was about whether the building taken out for the Killam Bear Center was, is exempt or not? That's the question.
Okay, good.
So it's the building, the land, because it still belongs to Killams.
Correct.
Is not exempt, it's in current use.
For years, which is.
Right.
That, so my question is, are we voting on whether to say something is exempt?
Yes.
Or we are voting on an abatement of taxes, for example?
No, that's, that, that has nothing to do with it, this is two thousand twenty-four exempt property. You're voting that you, yes, you agree with the legal opinion and, and, and that it qualifies for an exemption as you know it, or no, it does not?
Because it completely says that my understanding of what is an exempt use of a building, that, that's fine, but I thought that people voted in the main determination of something was exempt was the D R A.
The D R A reviews everything, the select board votes, and in this case.
Yep.
They sent two thousand twenty-three's exemption back to the store finding that all of the particulars that are needed for exemption of the building had not been met. So, so the Killams personally paid in full the taxes.
Okay.
And hired an attorney who made legal the Killam Bear Center as a standalone owned by the Killam Bears.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the only thing that changed is that the buildings were still in Ben and Debbie Killam's name. Now the building itself is owned by the Killam Bear Center, which meets all the criteria.
And I, I get that, I appreciate that, but mine is, is on previous boards that I served, when like U D S came on, or when, we've had two other ones that we said, yeah, like these are exempt, but I thought that those were determined. We would get, those were just affirming votes.
No, you.
We were doing affirming votes based on.
You get a recommendation from, you get a recommendation from your assessor, and the board, because by law, the select board is the final determining vote for any kind of assessments.
Yeah.
That's why.
But the D R A could overrule it.
But what happened is, in the last two years, maybe, the D R A has become much more active in reviewing the exemptions that have been granted, and in detail, and getting, actually often turning down what a board has decided and sending it back to the board. And this is one of those instances.
Well, and what's happened a lot over the last two years is things have been challenged and sent to the B T L A, and they're the ones that send it back and say, you're wrong, sorry, fix this.
That's it, okay, yeah, yeah. B T L A, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Everybody has stepped up their review, their routine.
Yeah.
Perfect, well, mine is, is based on, okay, so that is a.
So I gave you the info.
The information, and after reviewing that information, okay, and the comments from the B T L A, and the change in that stuff, that I would move the town line, select board, recognizing affirmed that the Killam Bear Center is a tax-exempt entity, organization, and buildings and such issued to joint privileges financial benefit of that exception.
I will second that motion. And we have only one member at the cover, if you wish to comment.
Understanding, my understanding was the question was whether the, um, the Bear Center actually owns property, and that the law requires them not, not just to be a five-one-one-two-three, but to be an actual owner of, of land.
Not them, it's property.
Not land, yeah.
And in this case, that's important because the Killams remedied the problem, and the Bear Center now owns the building. So the building becomes exempt, the land is still theirs, it's not exempt.
Okay, right, the land is not exempt for building, and it is now owned by, by one, two, three, and that's a property.
That meets all the criteria by the state. And that is the, yeah.
In fact, that's, uh, Michael is looking at, we can't share that with you, but that it was a very clear legal opinion.
And there's previous state, there's previous, um, adjudicated findings that support this exact situation.
Yeah, I know it's been controversial, I just want to make sure that, um, they'll all be teeth towards the eyes.
Yeah.
They've been double crossed.
Double cross, not double cross, but yes, there's plenty of dots on these eyes, but there is, but the, the difference between property and land, right, okay, it is, it's, and that.
In this case, it's very critical.
Yeah, it's critical, okay.
So.
I have a question, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, what did the assessor recommend?
The assessor recommended, uh, well, let me look. Uh. Here we come up, hold on, Killam Bear Center. I believe he was recommending that Bear Center, that it not be exempt, there were things that needed to be provided. And that's because at the time that he looked at this, he didn't believe they had been provided uh, in terms of ownership of the property, and that has been remedied, and they now own it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor of granting tax exemption for the building of the Killam Bear Center, say aye.
Aye.
And aye, Judy.
Thank you.
So that is agreed. And again, Michael, thank you for stepping up again.
I appreciate that, that was interesting, and I do think it is very much, it is not intuitive. But the, the fortunate thing is, I mean, four generations of town council has, it's, you still learn all the time, but I still, that's, that was interesting.
Yeah, yeah, in past, in past boards, often you look at the list that we've got it last year, pretty much gets approved and it goes forward, and then a couple of years ago, things dramatically changed.
Well, and I think the interesting part is, I can say this, because I'm the treasurer at the Hannover Center Church. Hannover, they physically came, and that, which is what Todd did this year, physically went to the building to make sure it was still a church because the B T L A is getting so.
No, and so we, no, and that's, but I know that also the other, there's the stilt building. We, I mean, their agents are, they could, they don't own the land, but they own the property above it, but it is not. It is complicated law, and it's something that, like, we're fortunate to have the attorneys.
Yes, we are.
But that's all, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too. See ya, Mike, thanks.
Welcome.
Done with that one.
Yes.
Then you need to I don't, I do with my. Yes. Why the upper? Why the Upper Valley Land Trust is?
Oh.
Yeah, it's because Todd, right, recommended, no.
No.
And when you, well, I'll wait till they get back, they're out there yakking.
Yeah. All right, number eight, so that was in the minutes here last.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Well, we had quite an interesting conversation, Bill.
Ah, so sorry.
Hey, that's, how's with these new paper plates, you know, that's very fancy.
Oh, that's Jordan trying to brighten your day.
I told you that, sure.
Well, we got a whole bunch of them, so, yeah, she likes to look, she likes to use them. Earrings, yeah, I might, oh, a good idea, next time I'm gonna do that.
Okay, so at last week's meeting, we, uh, David moved and I seconded that we not exempt the Upper Valley Land Trust properties, they should be either in current use or conservation easements. And we voted to follow Todd's recommendation, which was the same. So we have that before us again, do you want to reconfirm that the official decision for tax exempt property?
Why is it before us again if we related?
It's before you again because in the minutes, it said that you, that Todd was supposed to go back and revisit this and confirm why? Well, what he said to me was.
He didn't need to.
There's, right, there's no buildings on the land, so they don't qualify, period, that's it.
Okay. So that would be interesting. And so we were confirming that they're, they are not.
I'll move it.
I'll second, all right, then, thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judy, aye. Oops, hey. Thank you. That's that one, yeah, we've done the policies and the ordinance, we have a citizen concern. If I can perhaps just paraphrase that concern.
No, no, I think.
Yeah.
That the town has, as folks who've been listening and know, we're looking at next year's road project, which is going to be out by the skiway. And we're recommending guardrails out there for safety. And this individual felt that the river road was much more of a safety issue. And does not understand why the select one thinks we're gonna put guardrails at the skiway instead of the river road. My take on this is that we have road projects that we have to do and we have worked on the river road many times and I'm sure that Scotty is aware of issues there and and he will clarify and maybe put guardrails there, but that was not a part of this year, so next year's road planning to be skipped.
Yeah, I I agree, I I, first of all, this just as an aside, this this comment that we got from Mr. King was unnecessarily hostile. And not very positive, but leaving leaving that aside, the underlying issue was, should we put in guardrails somewhere along the river road? And on that question, I think I would defer to Scotty and Sean and ask them if there are places where uh, public safety could be enhanced by adding guardrails to the road somewhere. I mean, this email doesn't give us any useful information about where or why or.
Well, he's talking about the lower, the southern section, which is the southern section, which is is all dirt now. And it needs to be redone, so that's on the long range plan to be done. And there's no sense in putting guardrails on it now when then you have to rip it all up and blah, 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 blah. Well, not only that, there's a lot of drainage work, this is gonna be a huge million or so dollar project. Yes.
I think, I live on. Um, the dirt section is starting to swell for a year, but it's a huge piece of land. We have a good government do that search in the bank, that's a lot of guardrail on something that eventually is gonna have to be redrawn. Um, I think it's a silly idea to do it now before somehow the road is. I don't think anybody's falling into the river and the seven or eight years to travel. And your life is at risk.
For town to.
Me help, Tom. Judy, Northern Woodlands, did we get that answer? I don't know what I did with the legal thing, it was in that.
Forty, um, northern.
Yeah, right here.
Next town's down to now and then to leave it, coach, the the meaningful regardment, um, the next couple of hours.
Yeah.
I know about.
But you didn't vote on it the last time.
The house, we towered them.
You said to get more info on it. I know, thank you. But I didn't know we were gonna have this back when I did the agenda.
So to just sort of wrap us on this, I think my suggestion would be that we ask Sean and or uh, Scotty to, over the long term, get like a recognition about whether there are places where guardrails on the river road help them from public safety.
Okay.
Where on the other.
And and I know that he already knows, yeah, because when they do the, when they rebuild that section and put it in, there are certain places that will have guardrails.
But there there hasn't been a history of accidents there.
Nope.
So, well, it's just a comment, and maybe, but it's a straight stretch, barring being an even rate, which we can't control very well.
Right, or speeding, or, you know, anything.
Well, they can't get by your house about inventory.
Well, I know, if they'd slow down, you know, lower, they come over that hump and they just lose it.
Why would get that garden?
Okay, something.
Changing and going back, we have one more exemption that we sent to legal, which was the Center for Northern Woodlands. And our attorney said that the last time we discussed this, we actually entered into a settlement agreement with them. And they got an exemption for everything but a nineteen percent rent, let's see, exemption for all but nineteen percent of the building. And, uh, legal still questions if the magazine was charitable, but we decided to make it more business sense to settle than to take our chances and try to. See, legal is comfortable with that decision. From a legal perspective, I'm entirely comfortable with the board denying the exemption and trying the case, however, it is a misandome.
Right.
Might make more sense to send Todd back out and confirm what's not being used for the magazine.
Right.
And.
You know, everybody brings up this magazine like it's profitable. Are you part of their pay? It's more educational than property.
And we went through that the last time it was voted to be exempt, uh, but it's being treated just like the historians. The section that they use is exempt, the rest of it, well, well, but I'm not sure, I think we should send Todd back, actually, he just barely went, we could ask him to make sure that the only area the magazine is using, even if they have other empty areas, that's not the town's fault, but they should be paying taxes on it if they're not using it for their not-for-profit section. Does that make sense?
Um, that's not fine. Is the magazine organized as a five oh one C three nonprofit?
I think so, yeah, I think we got all that stuff in the original.
Educational.
Yeah, education, yeah.
So the the question about whether they make money on magazines doesn't.
Doesn't matter, that's right.
It's just a question of.
Right.
They have a non-profit.
We know they have an apartment and I think they have an office or something there that.
Just them that they used, they rented out, they rent out the apartment.
Yes.
And that's all.
The part that they can exempt.
That's the part they pay, right.
So Todd could go back and relook. We can decide that, it's up to you guys, or I'm comfortable with going with what we decided before.
I'm comfortable with what we decide.
Okay, so it's exempt.
Partially.
Okay, I may go on to see these again.
You will next year. But we probably don't have to get legal every year on every.
Unless they change.
Unless something changes, right.
Thank you, and thank, please thank legal for doing so patient.
Did, and she got it back to us quick, it was exciting.
Back to Eversource, oh, bless little Eversource. We've been notified, this is just, I don't think we can do anything about this at this point, they have a projected increase in their rates. Not exactly.
Do they what? Oh, what a surprise, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
I was just giving this to the board to notify them, so, and it's not till twenty.
I thought it was August.
Well, August of twenty-four, sorry, the first one, and then the second one. Which is the big one.
If you've seen through.
Yeah.
I don't know that they've ever not been approved. They've invested more than seven hundred and sixty-five million dollars.
Yes.
In the electric distribution system since two thousand nineteen. Anyway. Just the heads up.
The heads up, that's right.
Goes in that pile of things, we can't do anything.
Exactly.
Just letting you know in case somebody comes up to you and says, what's going on with the electric bill?
The quality of the rent and soup.
Maybe.
Um, we did those, so. We have the Boston Post paying. This is awarded to the oldest town resident, and there are some stipulations. The person must have been a resident of the town for at least ten years. They have to maintain residency in line for those ten years, so they can't have just owned property.
Right.
And if they live in a nursing home or system living and they still maintain that residency, they can qualify. They are supposed to vote in town affairs, so they should definitely be registered on the voter rolls. Uh, if the current holder of the cane moves out of town, the cane is reimbursed. Once the cane has been given to someone, if someone else moves into town that's older, an age requirement, that original person with the cane gets to keep it. When the current holder of the cane is deceased, becomes deceased, the cane returns to the select board's office. And if a citizen chooses to refuse the Boston Post paying, the selectmen have the right to present it to the next eligible citizen.
Can they actually give people whose cane are not in a.
The original stays here.
Yeah.
Have a duplicate of it.
Right.
That is not an original that we give to people, it, up until twenty years ago, maybe.
Yeah.
Something like that, we actually gave that.
Right.
Original, which is, I don't know if you know this, it's like from the early nineteen hundreds, yeah, it's pretty historic.
One of very few that are left of the original.
Yeah, very few.
It's out there in a case of the hallway.
This was, this whole thing was set up as a line of Boston Post, which went out of business in nineteen fifty-six.
Yeah.
I didn't know when it went out of business, but yes. And there's usually a little presentation ceremony.
Yeah.
We've had some here, we've had some in nursing homes.
If the person will let you.
Yes.
Sometimes they don't want you to publicize it.
So, um, we have two contenders.
So.
And that's.
Sort of.
Sort of, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you have to decide whether a part-time resident.
Whether a part-time resident.
Qualifies.
Or whether a full-time resident, is he not a registered?
No, he is, yeah.
Yeah, so he's a registered voter.
Yeah.
And there's four years difference between.
Right.
Um. How part-time is part-time, do we know?
Well, if they're a registered voter, I think in order to, you have to lay your head. Well, that's for school, I don't know about for that, but.
Yeah, I think.
I don't, I don't know for sure.
Day over six months.
Yeah, but it depends, it's a gray area, gray area.
So.
Yes, yes, I know. Um, so one person, the part-time person is older than the full-time person.
And which she's part-time because.
She goes and lives somewhere else.
Probably goes to Florida in the winter, would be my guess.
She lives with her son up here and then goes somewhere else, probably lives with her other child, I don't know, I didn't ask that question.
So she's not in her own house, she's in her son's house.
Excuse me, yeah.
And how long, how much time does she spend here as opposed to elsewhere?
I don't know, I didn't. How long she lived here? No, not too long, I'd have to find out for sure, but.
Well, she would be the, the normal choice, because she's the oldest person.
Only age-wise, she would be, right.
But but only if she's not a a part-time resident, if she or she's, you know, if she's here a month, a year, then then she's already qualified. So we need to find out how much time that year she spends here.
And the other person is a lifelong resident.
Lifelong resident, yeah.
Which in, in my view, trumps.
Yeah.
The older age, like, I mean, I think he was born here.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
Here, lived here his whole life.
I'm okay giving it to you. I mean.
But you're right, otherwise we need to know what part-time.
Is there, is there a thing that says you must have lived in town for so many years?
Ten years.
So I I don't know that this other person has even lived here for ten years.
I'm trying to apply a set of rules to make this decision, I don't, haven't seen the actual rules, so you have to see.
I sent you the rules.
Yeah, up here.
And then I sent you a bunch of historical stuff, too.
Rented a lot for ten years.
I mean, I, this is not, I did research.
This looks like it was prepared by the law and selected.
It was.
Well, where did this come from?
Our I, our I archives, what do you mean?
Those are the rules, we have.
It used to go by what the Boston Post thing did, and then things changed, there's an article there that explains it all. Then it, well, because he, yeah.
Yeah.
It, and then, and then there was sort of this where all these towns were doing all these different things.
Well, initially.
So then they decided to, right, that's right.
And then the first big change was they allowed women to get it.
Right.
Okay, so those women are taking all of.
And then the towns. Right, bye, then the towns were told to come up with their own set of criteria.
So this is the criteria that a prior select board came up with.
Yes.
But if this is just a select board set of rules, then we can do whatever the hell we want.
That's true, too, really.
Yes, you can.
Like.
Yeah.
You can just say.
Generally, we would be bound by the rules that were articulated when the cane was given to us by the Boston Post. Although, since the Boston Post is now gone, I don't know that there's anyone who enforce those rules anymore.
That's right, and we know historically those rules have changed over time.
Why?
But.
But towns.
But towns changed, yes.
And no one sued them.
To allow women to have it, to do, I would say the easiest answer for me is, listen, he's lifelong, he's lived here forever.
And he's due, so. So originally, I met anybody, so now I'm a rock and bangs be. Given the king, I'll second that.
Heard that, all those in favor, say aye.
Yeah, aye, leave it aye. Does he want it? If anyone wants to give this to me, I don't want it.
I think he would. I think he would be honored.
He would be.
He will accept it. Um, he's one of those individuals, or somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Be honored. And.
He may not jump for joy because he's that old, but, you know.
Yeah.
It will, he will be honored.
Um, okay.
I want a golden ebony AR fifteen or something.
I think our audience, I think this is too mundane discussion.
Well, you still have here two on.
Yeah.
Here.
Two.
Jordan, Jordan and Jam.
Jam, yes. Okay, we have a report of, well, let's move to the appointment of a new conservation commission member. The chair of the conservation commission emails asking, saying that the commission. Had moved seconded and voted to appoint a new alternate member. And they would hope that the board would approve that. And it is John McLaughlin, who sent him a letter saying he'd like to be. Uh, on the conservation commission.
I'm moving.
Thank you, Ben. Is there discussion? And any of the public want to discuss?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye. Judy, aye. And Dana, can you let?
Yep.
Conservation Commission.
I will.
Okay. Um. And. Let's see. You, that's, okay, the borderwood cut. We have Stein on Preston Road. Uh, a thousand thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Ben, did you have a chance to look at that?
Yep.
It's fine, okay? And then we have an intent to.
Somebody needs to vote this first, sorry.
I'll, I'll move it. I'll second.
Move intent. Okay. And Judy, aye. For standing and. Uh, that's woodcut.
Yes.
Um, and then we have an intent to cut. For Stein. Uh, also on Preston Road, so it looks like he's doing more cutting.
Yeah, he was. They weren't done, so.
Okay. Do we need to move that?
Um, sure.
I guess we need to sign.
You usually do. You have to sign it. That's the report of what cut, sorry.
Okay, I'll move.
What's the minimum amount of? Trees that you have to be cutting down in order to be required and filed?
We tell people you should file one anytime, because when people see you cutting trees, they call us and report you, and then we have to investigate. Um, so even if you're taking. You know, five thousand board feet out, two trees, three trees, whatever. You should get an intent to cut. It's an emergency.
Well, no, but like if you're clearing space to put a garage or something, you're gonna cut down a tree, surely you don't have.
One tree, yeah.
One or three or two or, I don't know, a couple trees.
I think, I think that the regulation does have an exemption for a homeowner who's doing just that. I think.
There's an exemption if it's gonna fall on your house, or if it's gonna fall on your driveway. Or you can have up to ten thousand board feet of lumber cut that you're going to use yourself.
Or.
But you still have to fill out an intent to cut. Because there's a place.
I really do.
No, there's a place right on there where you fill it out. Where you say it's exempt. This is how much I cut, but it's exempt because of this reason. I can show you.
Okay, I've moved the intent to cut for Mr. Stein. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Judy, aye, okay.
The same, that's the report of.
This is.
Yes, it's the same.
That is the report of woodcut, yes. That's his last year's intent, the last intent. That's the report of woodcut for the last intent. Then you signed a new intent to cut today.
Yeah.
Oh, you do, it's right here. Sorry.
Yeah, no, but the the question I was trying to, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what's the statute? What's the set of rules that we're operating?
You'd have to look it up on R S A. I don't have.
No, no.
No.
This is, this is a different question.
This is a cane.
Oh, okay. There isn't one. Read the history in the, in the thing.
I did read the history, but the history seems, when you, it's your, if you give somebody some, something in trust. And you set up rules, then that creates a, there's a legal doctrine of, of, of. Uh, under trust law, like if, if I, if I give them a, a five hundred million dollars to Dartmouth and. You know, one of the conditions is that they name a building in my name, and, or that they're gonna use it for a specific purpose. They can't then just, after I'm dead, go change that. My, my family could come back and say, I want that stuff back. You're not respecting the, the rules that were put in place. So presumably that same thing would apply to this cane, although. Obviously.
Yeah.
Who knows? Nobody's gonna enforce that policy, but. Anyways.
Yeah, I don't. It's not such a. It's okay, it's a vote. I don't know that it needs to sign. Yeah, you guys can't sign them, sorry.
Yeah.
So that's what I was trying to figure out, is what the rules are when it comes to the cane. And a statement about what the rule governs and prior select board isn't really.
I don't think anybody has ever been concerned about that in the, in the past. That's why nothing's ever been.
Yeah.
Legalized or whatever you want to say.
Hey, Dana.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a draft statement for us for? Publication, uh.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I was too, um. Immersed in.
Other.
A lot of other things, yeah. Um, I'm happy to write one and send it out, um, to you guys later today.
Okay, we're looking for, uh, just a statement to be posted, I think, on the town website and the reserve, just about. Respecting the lifeguard authority and issues that have gone in. Just a brief reminder for folks about those regulations.
And a brief reminder that the town supported hiring lifeguards, actually demanded you guys.
Before we publish something, I think.
Yes, she's gonna send it out.
I'm gonna send it all around.
Um, do we want to talk about the, the response we got to the, uh, first application by?
Yes, actually. That was on my list of things. Um.
Get off the agenda.
Great, no, that's okay. Let's take that up right. Um, well, sure.
So this goes.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the long list of things that we probably really can't do anything about, but. It's worth noting, and I don't know, maybe even posting on our website, that we got a long. Deep, that we, we moved to intervene, and we basically, the conservation commission drafted some. Requests with respect to the re-licensing of the, um, hydroelectric power plants on the Connecticut River down. Um. The conservation commission drafted a response to some of those, uh. So the relicensing was included in number of requests for various things. Um, a lot of other towns did, did similar responses. We also moved and were granted permission to intervene in that licensing process. We're now officially party to that process. Um, the conservation commission's. Uh, letter, I think, was largely based on something that was drafted by a local nonprofit. Uh, the, the River Conservancy or, I forget the name.
Yeah, I can't remember.
But it was, I think that was. Mainly formed the basis for their, their comments. Um, so what we got. In the material, what Dana circulated was a long and very detailed response.
Fifty-four or fifty-eight pages.
Not, not including the appendix.
Right, right.
That, that responded to those. You know, not just the town of Lime.
Right.
Although, the town of Lime is listed in various places.
They are mentioned, yeah.
Uh. But, uh, all of the different comments they got, and it articulates the, the, uh, the party seeking the. You know, the, the dam operators, um. D A M N operators. Uh, position with respect to the various issues that were raised in those responses. I personally felt their, their arguments were pretty persuasive and, uh, well reasoned and well argued and well, you know. At least, you know, they, they take issue with. Certainly. Specific things that were raised about, you know, well, erosion, is it better or worse with the dams operating, and their position is. You're better off with us operating. You know, there's gonna be erosion, but there's less erosion with us running our dams than if we weren't running them. I, I'm not a, an engineer, I don't have the ability.
Argument that we've heard before, and it's. It's just like any other two sides.
Yeah. So, but I don't know if it makes sense for us to put that up somewhere where people who are interested in it could see it. Um, I think from a legal perspective, if we wanted to pursue this further, what that would entail would be. Hiring engineers to try to make our argument, make the arguments that were made by the conservation commission more. Or try to refute the arguments made by the applicants. And hiring lawyers to actually participate in the licensing process at a deeper level. My personal view is that that would be a colossal waste of time and money.
Yeah.
I concur that, uh, we definitely should post it. In fact, I had a note to mention that I think this should be posted, and we should.
Yeah, Jordan can do that.
Jordan can do that, and they could put, Jordan could put a quick note on this serve that we've received this response.
She'll have a link right to it.
Link.
Yeah.
And then they can see it. That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Um. And yeah, I certainly, we haven't been asked to take the next step. I would not be definitely in favor of it at this point.
Well, nobody would ask us. I mean, that would be, we.
Right.
Out, out of the rest of the conservation.
Well, yeah, I, I wouldn't say nobody would ask us.
Well, I'd be interested to see what the. Connecticut River Valley is gonna do, because they may have people. That just needs.
A big sign.
No, I'll, I'm gonna print the names after. You're, you're signing it with today's date, because. This is one that Joe sent after you signed the first one, that has a teeny revision to it. Don't ask me what the revision is. I'm sorry, what? On the line, yeah.
Okay, thank you, um, David. That's very helpful.
I'm glad you brought that up. I should have put that on the agenda, too.
I saw it last night, our agenda. Um, and so also I think Dana was gonna update us. She's not completed drafting. The two R F P S for the twenty twenty-five. Reval. When she has those a little further along, I think she will also send those out to us. Is that right?
Yes, they need to go to legal and, uh, D R A. Before they come to you guys, just because there's no sense in.
That and forth.
Right, then it would go back and forth three times, so.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
Hopefully they're moving along. At this point, you're in July, I can't believe that.
I know.
Okay.
And some of these kind of want to answer official decision forms for my house.
You do.
I can't. My wife, my daughter, I'm sorry.
I'm sure they would just be so pleased.
I can see Harvey using that in reverse. Okay. I think, let's see, what do we have?
I can't figure you a bad sign.
Except, I think we're coming up to non-public.
I think we are.
And it is, uh, eleven oh five. And.
Could I have my pen back?
We'll move that we go into non-public session. And thank you, David, and this will be, thank you, Ben. Judy, aye. Yes, please, that would be great.
Who seconded that, David?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
And.
And it's under A.
This is under A, and we may, I think. I think we have several under A that we will take back to back.
Yep. Okay, so I'm gonna turn the meeting off.
Yes, thank you all for joining us.